Let's please take our seats. Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have our invocation from pastor or minister Philip Blackwell of Miracle Temple Christian Ministries in Riverdale, be followed by the pledge of allegiance if you would stand with me. And as we are standing for prayer, I'mma ask that we keep in mind the family of Councilman Bobby Williams of Lake City who passed away today. So please keep his family in prayer.
Lord, we come before you. We give you thanks and praise for this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, God, even for these officials that have gathered for this meeting today, God. We ask that you would give them clarity of mind, clarity of thought, that you would bless them to be transparent, honest, forthright, diligent about the people's business, that they would be honest, God. Bless them, God, as they are about the communities that they serve. Let them be thankful for being placed into office to serve the people. We ask that you protect them, protect their families, God. Watch over them as they do their work, and they'll thank you for it, and they'll bless you for it. In Jesus's name we do pray. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the January 16, 2018 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I have a few to add. First, I would like to add the board's legislative agenda to this evening's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Also, I'd like to add the interviews for the chief of police. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Also, I would like to delete item number nine, which is the Steel Road Board of Education Driveway Improvement Project Amendment that is currently not ready to go. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments?
There was a removal, a letter of removal for the zoning petition.
I think we addressed that when we get to the zoning hearings.
I'll just remove it.
Is that, Jack, is that, do we just wait till we get to the zoning portion to? Okay, we're just going to delete it then. I offer a motion to delete a couple of items from the zoning portion of the meeting, item 12 and item 13, zoning.
And will you add item 15?
I'm sorry?
Hold on a second. Let's, is that your motion for items 12 and 13? Is there a second on that?
Yes, that's my motion, sorry.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Please, yes, please let the record reflect that the petitioner is the one who asked for the item to come off. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Ms. Hamburg?
Yes, and I received a letter also from the petitioner for item 15, zoning petition, to come off.
Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing not in, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board has two proclamations to present this evening. The first, Clayton County recognizes the 110th Founder's Day of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority as presented by Chairman Turner with the sorority members, Alpha Kappa Alpha. Please come forward as the commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation.
Come on, AKAs.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority was founded on January 15, 1908, on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC, making Alpha Kappa Alpha the oldest Greek letter organization established by African-American, college-trained women who trailblazed change in patterns of human relations in America during the 20th century. Whereas through the years, AKA has used the sisterhood as a grand lever to raise the status of African-Americans, particularly girls and women. AKA has enriched minds and encouraged lifelong learning, provided aid for the poor, the sick, and underserved, initiated social action to advance human and civil rights, worked collaboratively with other groups to maximize outreach on progressive endeavors, and continually produced leaders to continue its credo of service. And whereas, by continuing its service throughout Clayton and Henry Counties, Psi Alpha Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha was chartered on December 10, 2005, represented by 150 diverse, talented, and distinguished women. PAO believes that sisterhood, scholarship and service are primary to its commitment to Clayton and Henry Counties. From donating hundreds of backpacks and supplies, to local schools, to beautifying community parks, from supplying resources to underserved families, to collaborating on political forums, in addition to many other service projects, Psi Alpha Omega Chapter has proudly served. Whereas in celebration of the sorority's 110th Founder's Day, Psi Alpha Omega held a reclamation activity to reclaim lost pearls, interacted with the community during a networking event, gathered to celebrate one another at the chapter's annual Founder's Day dinner, worshiped with one another during church service, and performed more than 110 hours of community service over the long celebratory weekend. Psi Alpha Omega is led by the Honorable Shayna M. Rooks. Therefore, I, Jeffrey Turner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby salute Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc., and the Psi Alpha Omega Chapter for commitment to service, sisterhood, and scholarship for 110 years. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 16th day of January in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. And the last proclamation for this evening. Clayton County recognizes the Office of Youth Services for sponsoring the upcoming Teen Summit as presented by Commissioner Gregory. With the Office of Youth Services, as well as the Youth Commission and others, please come forward. And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes January 27, 2018, as Day of the Teen. Whereas it is important for the youth of Clayton County to be exposed to program service opportunities, design and create positive learning experiences that will give rise to promising contributing members of our community. And whereas, on March 3, 2015, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners created the Clayton County Youth Commission, and on May 2, 2017, the Office of Youth Services was established to address the needs of Clayton County youth. Through this office, the youth are able to interface with government officials, expand their knowledge as it pertains to the inner working of government and policy development, and service change agents as it relates to issues concerning them. And whereas, the Office of Youth Services will host a Teen Summit to actively engage Clayton County youth in workshops that will educate them on how to overcome issues affecting today's youth, expose them to programs, services, education, and career opportunities, encourage them to become leaders in their personal and professional goals, and empower them to promote self-worth, individuality, build up one another, and strengthen their peers. The summit will have guest speakers such as Dr. Raphael Simpson, Deputy Superintendent of Clayton County Public Schools, Ryan Morrison, Deputy Director of EMA Operations, and many more. And whereas, Clayton County depends on youth as vital community assets and resources, and on their unique knowledge, idealism, skills, perspectives, ideas, and creativity as they lead awareness, service, advocacy, and philanthropy activities. Now therefore, I, Sona Singleton Gregory, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January 27, 2018, as Day of the Teen in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to join me in this recognition and celebrate by your support of this event offered through the Office of Youth Services. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 16th day of January in the year 2018. Sona Singleton Gregory, Commissioner.
All right, at this time, we're gonna consider the adoption of the consent agenda, which will also include the approval of the January 2nd, 2018 regular business meeting minutes. Are there any agenda items that a board member would like to see removed?
No, sir. I have to abstain. You do have to, the benefits.
Just separate, 7C.
Is it, it's already separated?
Okay, hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Commissioner Franklin Warner wanted to remove item numbers, the letter C, so that we may take a separate vote for that item.
Okay, place that in for a motion to remove.
I need to make a motion that we take item C separately?
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now going back to adoption of the consent agenda, which includes the regular business meeting minutes of January 2nd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we could go back to item C?
Yes, ma'am. Item C is Recommendation for Award RFP 17-023, Insurance Brokerage and Consulting Services for Employee Benefits for Clayton County, Georgia. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
I abstain.
Nay.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I didn't catch.
I said aye.
Okay, any abstentions?
Abstain for cost.
So we have three, four, one against, and one abstention. It passes.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to address the interviews for the chief of police at the end of the meeting?
Yes, let's do that after we do the zoning hearings.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Chuck Reed, Legal Department.
Chairman, how would you like me to handle these?
How many you have?
Three.
Take them together, unless a board member wants to.
I think it's just seven.
This one has a, has changes. Zoning?
No, we're not on zoning, are we on?
I thought you said zoning.
No, we'll take the chief's interviews out.
We're starting with item number eight on the agenda, and that's page two.
Number nine. All right, take.
I have eight, 10, and then the legislative agenda.
Okay, unless a board member wants to single either one of those items out, let's take them together. Please move forward with it.
I think I may have given you my copy of the legislative agenda resolution.
Did you want to see it in order to make reference to it?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, the item we took off on the Steel Road, did we just remove number nine and not 10? We still gonna do utility?
Just number nine.
So we're still moving forward with the power?
With number 10, that's great.
All right, I have Resolution 2018-7, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an agreement with Southern Crescent Sexual Assault and Child Advocacy Center located and conducting business in Clayton County to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. I have a request from the Transportation and Development Department requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power for the Stagecoach Road and Steel Road Improvement Project, further to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. And I have requests, Resolution 2018-9, which is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners identifying certain state legislative matters to be addressed during the 2018 legislative session of the Georgia General Assembly, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Also, we would like an executive session for personnel and litigation. And real estate.
And real estate. Okay, at this time, we'll have an appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, Region 3 Advisory Council, to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Angelita Howard. It's a full board appointment, expires on February 28, 2021. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations? All right, Madam Clerk, we'll hold this over until the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move to item number 14. This is a zoning petition. The applicant is John Swiniger, and the request is the acceptance of a conceptual development plan, the detailed development plan, and an amendment to the official zoning map for the construction of 167 single-family residential lots.
Okay, is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. This application is listed for a decision of the Board of Commissioners. A public hearing was held on December 19, 2017, at that regular business meeting. The planning and zoning staff recommends approval with conditions. ZAG recommends denial, and this is District 3 Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
Okay, is the petitioner present, or is counsel?
We have to do that.
I just want to know if they were here.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Commissioner.
Yes, sir. I want to go ahead and make sure that I read everything correctly for the record, because there are some changes. I received some things in the mail, I mean, from email, as well as those that I made adjustments to, based upon research, as well as a meeting with the group. And I want to say thank you all, each of you, for your commitment, and really do appreciate your passion. And for the pastor, I want to make sure that you understand that one of the things that I do live by, and all thy getting, I must get understanding, and each day, I must seek wisdom as a precious jewel. So with that being stated, I want to say that condition number seven will be deleted, and the proposed subdivision shall contain no more than 148 lots, specifically excluding all lots to be owned by the HOA, and that would be the pocket parks, as well as the pavilions. Of those five pocket parks that are there, the five pocket parks must have at least two, two pavilion areas, as well as two play areas, that could be a mixed, a play area or can also include exercise equipment. The other item that must be deleted is item number 12 in its entirety, and substitute, therefore, the following. The home shall be a craftsman-style home that must be approved by our planning and zoning department, with a minimum of four different elevations mixed into the community, and shall be constructed with a minimum of 30% brick and stone on all four sides. Items can, other approved items that are approved through planning and zoning, such as hardy plank, as well as board battened siding, and we are gonna allow stucco for aesthetic purposes. The use of vinyl siding is strictly prohibited, and this is again to accomplish the definition of a true craftsman-style home that must be approved by planning and zoning. Also, we're going to look at item, condition number 20, so, that come after 20. Item 21, the HOA or the community shall be required to provide lawn service for the entire community, payment for which shall be included in the mandatory HOA dues and assessments for the subdivisions. Item number 21 is extremely important, because as in reviewing the plans over and over again, the portion, the subdivision that's most affected, or could be possibly, is Waterford Downs. And for that reason, we've taken into consideration the suggestion of the residents, and we've required the builder to now make those lots alongside of the Waterford Downs community, 14,000 square feet, as opposed to originally seven or the 10,000 that were proposed. The way this will be accomplished is through the water authority coming in, and they would have to tie in to that area since it's along one line. They did not suggest that they do it for the entire subdivision, as it would cause issues, but we will do it for that portion of the subdivision. Along with the side of Waterford Downs, there will be constructed a fence. That fence must be constructed and maintained by the HOA of the new subdivision, and there will be plants, as well as trees planted on both sides, on at least the side of the subdivision that is proposed. However, if it is deemed so, that there would like to be trees by the landowners on the other side of the property, which the proposed landowners do not own, then you can have that planted by the proposed landowner. Item number 23, opaque fencing shall be provided along the southern boundary line of the property, along the length of the inner 50-foot buffer which surrounds the entire development with single-family homes. And each home must conform to, each, each home must.
I'm sorry?
Let me get back on where I was. So each home must have a 50-foot buffer line that's around the entire property. The back part of the property where, I'm gonna answer this, because I did hear, in fact, Mr. Joe Warner, you mentioned on about how they went from 300 homes down to 100 and something, to down to where we are now, 148. That's because the subdivision originally was gonna be built on both sides of the creek. The creek on the other side is not gonna have any building. In fact, we're asking for the builder to allow at a further date for us to be able to have connectivity, as we are doing over in the Lakes Five area, as the opportunity for us to connect to the Fayetteville area. Also, the 20,000, the 20 square, the 20 acres that is between the subdivision and Arbor Forest will remain undisturbed, unless it's through us coming in and deciding at a later time to do something further. One other thing I do need to add, it states that the minimum square foot of the homes is 1,900 square feet. The minimum square feet of these homes must be 1,980 square feet. The average is not going to be 1,900, it's gonna be 2,100 square feet. And I think I covered everything. Oh, there's an error in it. Also, Kimberly, please make note, it shows that it's 80 acres, or 84 acres. The proper acreage of this property, based upon the last survey done, is 74.3 acres. Please correct that, and it is also based upon the court documents that were reviewed as well. I think I got everything. I do apologize for taking a while. And that's it. That's my motion.
Commissioner, was this what you read, was this agreed to by the petitioner? This is what was provided?
Yes, sir. Can you please state it on record for me? I think the only thing that she originally left out was the fence that we had agreed upon, it wasn't in that statement, and what you sent over in the trees. If you could, please confirm for me, please.
Please take the podium.
And if I may add, did you all figure out what was the actual percentage, based upon what we reviewed, of 7,000 square feet home versus the ones that were above 10,000 square feet? It looked like it was somewhere around 40, 30 to 40% was above?
I didn't do the percentage, but I can tell you that there were roughly 28 to 30 homes that were above the 10,000 square foot.
That's good enough.
Please state your name again.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 1 West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. The applicant is accepting of all the conditions that were read into the minutes today.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And that's my motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve with the stipulation of those conditions, and I'mma second that motion. Any questions? Any questions?
Can I just make sure I heard one of those right? Commissioner Warner, you said a fifty-foot buffer around all sides of each home?
It was fifty-foot buffer around, around the entire property, because that was very important, because of the fence that's being put in. What was the, the feet, the foot, what was the square footage between the homes? Because it's going to vary, because there are some lots that are sixteen thousand square feet, some are eighteen, and some are eleven thousand. But what is the minimum between the homes, between?
Are you speaking to the surrounding property?
No, each home, if you could ask, either, either you or the counsel.
Come back up there.
How many feet between each home again? The minimum?
Please take the podium.
I just, I thought you said fifty-foot around each home.
No, sir. But, I apologize, I just want Chairman to kind of...
Yeah.
One other thing, can we, that light at the end of Fitzgerald?
That's, that's it, though.
Okay, we'll just do that.
But yeah, I think there needs to be some more, something else for that railway.
But G dot said...
That do.
The roundabout fifty-four brings more traffic onto the road.
Right. Any other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
For the record, I'd like to add in additional conditions, one through twenty-four, as was based in a staff report, and for the record, I'd like to read those in.
Well, you know, we, one through twenty-four, we just read through. You want to take a look at this? This is what we just talked about that was agreed upon. Let me do it.
ADA compliance.
Oh, yes. No, that does not make revisions to any of those that are already in there. And also approve the ADA compliance. Yes, please. For the record, we're going to allow Ms. Kimberly Smith to read them in. I apologize, Chair.
Did you ever answer the question in reference to?
The side setbacks are ten feet.
Ten feet apart?
Yes.
You said the side setbacks between all?
The side setbacks on each home is ten feet, which would make a, a minimum of twenty feet apart.
A minimum of twenty?
Twenty feet. Okay, let me sure you say that clearly.
Ten on each side.
Okay, so we need to...
Okay, if you would, ma'am, go ahead and read those twenty-four items.
PUD zoning district to include low-density residential park recreation and conservation. The total acreage seventy, approximately seventy-four plus or minus acre, total development area forty point two-five plus or minus acre. The total open space playground is approximately thirty-three point nine plus or minus acres, or a total of forty-six of total site area. The setback, front setback is twenty feet, side setback is ten, and the rear setback is twenty feet. The typical and minimal lot size is seven thousand square feet. Gross density is approximately two point five lots per acre.
It changes with the fourteen thousand.
The gross, the gross density shall be in compliance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan, which is a gross density between two to four units per acre. The min, the minimum house size is as stated by Commissioner previously. The average house, the average house size is as stated by the Commissioner previously. All homes shall have two garage, two-car garage. Water and sewer service shall be provided by the Clayton County Water Authority. ADA disabled ramps located at all intersections shall be included. Sidewalks five feet wide and shall be provided on both sides of all interior streets. Underground utilities with streetlights throughout the community. A homeowner association and architecture committee shall be required. Centralized mailbox will be located at the community center. Fensi will be located along the entrance and will continue until the first intersection. The entrance signs shall be located on an island. The community center with meeting room and restrooms and outdoor seating area with shade features shall be provided. Five pocket parks to be provided, and shall be sodded and landscaped sidewalks, and at least three sitting areas with shade features with at least two-inch calab, caliper trees, excuse me. The temporary detention pond shall be reclaimed after construction for a community garden space and two pocket. There shall also be a minimum fifty-foot buffer around the entire development.
Can you correct that? It's supposed to be five total pocket parks, based upon what submitted.
Five pocket parks to be provided, and shall be sodded and landscaped with sidewalks, and at least three sitting areas with shade features with at least two-inch caliper And I also like to state for the record that it shall be required for the PUD to be in compliance with the section seven point seven C, seven point seven G, seven point seven four F, seven point four I, and seven point six B. These all deal with the requirements of what items should be stated on the site plan, which deals with the recreational open space, the unified control plan, as well as parking landscape plans, and the regulatory flexibility.
All right, anything else?
Can we just make sure that with counsel, that we don't have anything conflicting? Everything's in order? Okay? That's still my recommendation.
Any additional questions? All right, we already got a motion and a second. Those in favor, aye.
Wait a second. Do we need to amend the motion to accept those extra stipulations?
Those weren't extra.
They were already in there.
The last part were, were additional, to capture the, the truant of the planning and development.
Okay, so I amend.
The Chairman seconded.
Take, take the...
This original motion, there was not a second.
I seconded.
You seconded?
That's correct.
And so there needs to be an amendment to address the new conditions, I believe that Ms. Smith read into.
So moved on the amendment, on the items that needed to be added.
And I'll second. Any other questions? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
This is a vote for the amendment?
This is for the amendment.
This is a vote for the amendment, not for the act?
To include the amendment, that, the last amendment that she just read in.
A vote to, a vote for the amendment, then a vote...
We have to go back to vote for the originals.
That's correct. All right.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Going back to the first vote, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
It's for one, if I heard it correct, it passes.
In the final zoning petition for this evening, the applicant is Odysela Badon, and the request is for a rezoning.
Hold on, hold on a second, Madam Clerk. Let's let our guests leave before. And while they are leaving now, I want to take this opportunity to recognize County, City Councilwoman from Riverdale, Cynthia Stamps Jones, and our Mayor of Lovejoy, Bobby Cartwright. It's a pleasure to have y'all with us this evening.
Where's Cynthia Stamps?
Over there in the corner, over there high.
Cynthia? Where is she? Yeah, where is she?
She's over there in the corner.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah, looked a little different, okay, all right. I know who she was.
All right, Madam Clerk, let's proceed on. Is the petitioner for this request here?
Yes.
Please come forward. So you have the podium, please, please, state your name, who you're representing, or this is not your petition.
Good evening, Councilmen and women. My name is Odysela Badon, representing CWAM LLC, property address thirty-two sixty Railroad Street, Ellwood, Georgia. My clients are looking to rezone thirty-two sixty Railroad Street from General Business District to mixed-use commercial-industrial, MXI. Just to give you a little bit of history on the property, the property was formerly a trucking facility where trucks, rigs were repaired, as well as stored. Before my clients purchased the property, or excuse me, after my clients purchased the property, the property was vandalized and burned. They came in and remodeled the entire property, made it look a lot better, and now are looking to put in a group that is facilitating the film industry by using what is called lunchbox trailers, if you're familiar with movie, movie sites. Basically, these trailers are delivered to the sites as a catering piece, a mobile cafeteria, if you will. So they're not like general trailers, they look a lot nicer. I think you guys have the pictures, I sent the pictures to Ms., Ms. Kimberly here. This particular group is already operating in Atlanta, Georgia, and wants to move their operations here to Clayton County. They will, what we've asked for is not only to have this rezoning, but to be able to have four of the lunchbox trailers, excuse me, six of the lunchbox trailers and four of the catering trucks. They're also a catering company. The catering business will not be able to be established in the beginning, so as for now, the lunch, the lunchbox piece of the business is, is what will be operating first. There's some additions that has been asked of us, from staff, in order to facilitate the catering facility, some additions to the property, sewer, I believe there were some other items as well. So that will come after the fact, but we do want to get the business into Ellwood, Georgia, and Clayton County, so that they can begin operations.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Badon? All right, is there anybody here for or against who would like to speak about this request? Anybody like to speak for or against this request? Okay, Commissioner Gregory?
Okay, with that, Mr. Chair, no one has any questions. I will follow the recommendation of ZAG in approving this petition. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, there are some conditions, yes, with conditions.
Do I need to read them into the record? Approval with condition, the applicant shall provide a detailed site plan, should be submitted that reflects the proposed zoning district standards and Article Six development standards. Condition number two, limit the use to MXI to catering business and associated catering trucks and cafeteria trailers. Condition number three, no tractor-trailer parking leases to outside trucks shall be allowed. Condition number four, no more than six catering trucks and four catering trailers to be allowed on-site at one time. Condition number five, fencing shall be around building and repair shall be required.
Okay, is that your motion with those conditions?
Yes, that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, we will now have interviews for the Chief of Police position. If the Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles would please come forward to facilitate.
Yes, we're waiting on you.
The first candidate is Mr. Sean Buchanan.
Are the other candidates out of the room?
No.
If you are a candidate to be interviewed, if you would please go into the back room. Lieutenant Caulfield, could you escort them over to where the cestronades room is?
What is it? Cestronades, the, oh, wait, room.
If this is a public hearing, is there a reason why you're asking them to leave?
Because they're going to ask them the same questions. That would give them unfair advantage if they hear the questions that's asked to this gentleman.
But this is a public hearing.
Is that right?
You're conducting the interview in, in public.
Yeah, they all, no, they all left out the last one.
I mean, it was right.
Yeah, they all left the last one.
But hold on, you're saying by law, they have a right to be here or not?
They have a right. It's a public hearing. I mean, if you want to, for sake of fairness, but I don't think you can require them to leave.
Okay, well, one of y'all go back there and ask them if they would like to sit in, or they have, they obviously have an option.
Are there questions, new questions?
No, the same questions they, they're going to ask.
So let me, can I ask you a question? Have each candidate been already asked these questions previously?
No, ma'am.
Oh, well, that is a difference.
Yes, that's a difference.
Who said, who said to do it like this?
The board?
When?
When we do a, in a, in public meetings, and that's what they're saying.
That's what I'm saying. When? Who decides to do it?
I don't know.
Then it's, it's not them.
But they would, you would have to wait.
What happens?
They can do it tonight if they wanted to.
Nobody asked for something?
I don't know. Ask Mr. CEO. We good? Okay. Okay. All right, Ms. Ambles, let's proceed forward.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Mr. Buchanan, the first question is, serving and protecting the community is one of the main essential functions of policing. Please describe an innovative, community-based program you would like to implement. Discuss the program's significance to the community.
So, I've been a police officer about twenty years.
We can barely hear, please speak into mic.
My name is Sean Buchanan. I've been a police officer about twenty years for the city of East Point. One of the main things we focus on is community-based policing. We've had several, several incidents that was of news-worthy, negative, and one thing that saved us is the community. So, one of the first things I would implement in the Clayton County Police Department is, every command staff member must be a part of a community group, or a homeowners, homeowners' association group. Homeowners' association groups usually meet once a month. This is critical, and the reason it's critical is because, first of all, it builds trust within a community. Second of all, a lot of homeowners don't know when to call the police, when not to call the police. They just don't know, and they don't have any liaison between the police departments. By having a command member a part of a homeowners' association group, now you have almost your personal police officer. And what that has done in the community is, first of all, I take ownership of that neighborhood. If there's an issue, they can call me on my cell phone. Some things are police-related, some things are not police-related, but they don't know. It gives me an opportunity to educate those homeowners, and how better able to protect the neighborhood, start programs within the neighborhood. Also, they can communicate with me and tell issues that's going on in the neighborhood. That helps me prevent a crime before it happens. What's the second part of that question, please?
Discuss the program's significance to the community.
The reason it's significant is because it bridges the gap between the community and the police department. Also, it gives you so much information. Every neighborhood needs a police officer. If you look at the history of policing, police officers used to be a part of the community, but because of population increases, crime increases, police departments can't always do foot patrol and things of its nature. But once you have a police officer assigned to a community group, it... But once you have a police officer assigned to a community group, it brings back that face-to-face interaction in a non-enforcement manner with the public. By non-enforcement, I mean you're not giving tickets, you're not stopping, you're not stopping for criminal matters. That's very important. Most people are not criminals. Only about two or three percent of the population are violent offenders. That means about ninety-seven percent of the population are outstanding citizens. We just focus on the two or three percent. Ninety-seven percent of the police, of police involvement should be with the community, building trust. So, everybody likes police. The problem is everyone doesn't trust the police. So to build trust, you have to be a part of the community.
The second one, within the field of law enforcement, retention is a major challenge. What specific retention strategy will you engage to motivate your officers to stay?
First of all, the Chief of Police is the primary head of the department. They set the tone, point blank, period. If there's a retention problem, there's a chief's problem. And let me explain to you why. Clayton County is a incredible police department, is a full-service police department. You have every division you can possibly name. No one should be leaving this agency going to a smaller agency. It shouldn't happen. People don't leave jobs because of benefits and pay. They leave jobs because of bad management, bad leadership, not feeling appreciated, not being able to advance. That's why people leave jobs. If you look at even our own department, we have people leaving going up north. They're only making about four or five thousand dollars extra. If you look at what those agencies have to offer, they can't even offer what we offer. So you're leaving for a job that's going to pay you four thousand dollars more? That's about thirty-four dollars a month extra. And you don't have any place to advance once you get there. The problem is supervision. The first thing I'm going to do if I'm a Chief of Police is I'm going to lead by example. That's going to be a priority, is having great officers in this county. By far, we want the best officers. One way to do that is, first of all, speak with the officers, find out what's the problem. If you're a police chief, you have to be visible, you have to be accessible, and you have to teach people what are the goals of the agency. All these things are very important. If we have three hundred officers here, we should have three hundred recruits. Every officer should know somebody who needs a job, and we're hiring, and we have a shortage? The reason you have a shortage is because if a person is unhappy, they're not going to recommend a person come work here. Because, think about it, if they're not happy, why are they going to recommend someone else not to be happy? So first of all, we got to find out the root of the problem. What's going on? Do we have the best supervisors? Do we have the best equipment? What's the issue? So, when I started policing, I was finished college, I was doing an internship. So I went to Smyrna Police Department, I met Bruce Parks, he was an officer there. I think he's a major here now. I rode with Bruce Parks about two or three months as part of my program. That was the best time of my probably life. Bruce Parks was a great officer, he was funny, he was engaging, he was just hilarious, but he made me really enjoy policing. And from that point on, I knew I wanted to be a police officer. You have Georgia State, Clayton State, Kennesaw State, the AU, Mercy University, all these programs have a criminal justice program. So if all these schools have a criminal justice program, how are we short? We should have a relationship with every college. About three, four hundred people graduate a year from Kennesaw State in criminal justice. We should have these people coming straight to the police department. Why don't we have this relationship? I'll tell you why. Because unfortunately, within our agency, we're still dealing with education versus non-education. And I can assure you, if you don't have education and you're part of the recruitment process, you're not going to recruit a person with education. So the first thing you need to do is find out who's doing the recruitment. Why aren't they engaging in these universities? Second of all, we got to have an internship program. That's how I started policing, is through an internship program. And let me tell you the benefits of having an internship program. First of all, you vet the people you want to hire. They're there two or three months working with you, are they late, are they on time? What character do they have? You see all these things ahead of time. Also, you have a lead weight. So, let me explain to you what I mean by lead. Harley Davidson Motorcycles build great motorcycles, and they have highly skilled laborers. However, in the seventies, there was recession. They laid all these highly skilled laborers off. And when there was an upturn, guess what? When they went to hire these people, they already had jobs. So when the upturn came, they could not benefit from the increase in economy because they didn't have anybody to build motorcycles, they didn't have any mechanics, they didn't have anybody, all this highly skilled labor had left. So from here on out, what they do, they work on a two-year, a two-year delay. And what this does is this, if there's a downturn in the economy, guess what? They don't have to lay people off because they're working on that two-year delay. And when there's an upturn, they still have those employees in place to benefit from the economy. That's what an internship does. In the unlikely event that someone leaves this organization, we have an internship program where we've already vetted applicants, they've already been through background, and guess what? We can easily put them in the workforce. So an internship is critical if you're going to have a, a police department that's fully staffed. The third is the military. Every month, people recycle out of the military. They're leaving the military after four, six years. The military is, policing is paramilitary. You have a chain of command, policies, procedures. All these things mirror that of a police department. Every month, our recruiters need to be at a military base, Camp Lejeune, Fort Stewart, you know, in Columbus. They need to be there, Fort Benning, they need to be there recruiting police officers. With the amount of people who are getting out of the military, graduating college, and the number of officers that we have here, we shouldn't have a retention problem. Everybody should be recruiting, but it starts with the Chief of Police. If you're the chief, what are you going to do? Those are the things I would do.
Right. Finish the sentence, the role of a police chief is?
To set the tone and direct the agency. If you're a police chief, you set the tone of that department. If it's an ethical department, it's because the police chief is ethical. If it's not, it's because the police chief is not ethical. You set the direction of the department based on your behavior. You're the leader of the agency. I would tell you this, you can ask probably nine point five out of ten police officers, what's the goal of the agency? Any agency, I don't care where you work. They couldn't tell you. Can't tell you the goals of an agency, but yet they're police officers. And you think about this, how can you do your job as a police officer if you don't know your goals? You can't do it. In the police department, there are several divisions. Everybody's operating independently. Nobody's operating together. You have FOD, they're answering calls, they're trying to prevent crime. You have CID, they're doing, you know, they're reading reports, trying to solve cases. You have all these different entities within the police department, but nobody's on the same accord. If you're the chief of that department, everybody needs to be on one accord. And first of all, everybody needs to know the goals. If I'm a Chief of Police, one of my goals is going to be five percent reduction in crime every year. And everybody in that police department is going to work toward that goal. I don't care you have an animal control here. If you're the animal control person, you driving your car, your truck, you see someone smoking marijuana or selling marijuana on the corner, you better call the police. And they say, that's not my job, my job is to catch dogs. No, that is your job. Your duty is to catch dogs. Your job is five percent reduction. And at the time, your objective don't meet our goals, you out of here. Everybody got to be on the same accord. If you go to the Ritz Carlton, I don't care if it's in Atlanta, Miami, San Francisco, Europe, Dubai, it doesn't matter, every employee of the Ritz Carlton know the Ritz Carlton goals, whether you're the manager, the receptionist, the cook, or the housekeeper. They say those goals when they get to work, they say I'm doing today, and they say them before they get off. That's the Ritz Carlton policy. They can't give you great service if they don't know the goals. We can't give, we can't be a great department if everyone's not on the same accord. If I'm a chief, I have to set the goals and priorities of this department. I determine the direction of this department. That is my job, that is my duty or responsibility, but I can't do that unless everybody's on the same accord. So first of all, I got to make sure we know the goals, from myself to the deputy chiefs to the majors, the captains, all the way down to the person in the academy. If I ask you the goal of this department, you better know it, because how can you do your job if you're not even on the same team? That's important. So if I'm going to be a Chief of Police, I'm going, my first, I'm going to set the tone by having goals and objectives for this department, and we're going to follow them. And crime reduction is going to be one of the main goals. So as the director and the head, you set the tone and the direction for the department, point blank, period.
That's it, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your interest in Clayton County and interviewing this evening with us. You feel free to have a seat or to, I don't know, I don't know what the next step's going to be, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next candidate is Robert Jones.
Ms. Ambles.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Jones. Serving and protecting the community is one of the main essential functions of policing. Please describe an innovative, community-based program you would like to implement and discuss the program's significance to the community.
As Chief of Police before, I have, I've implemented several programs involve, getting the community involved and the officers involved with the community. It's one of the paleon principles of law enforcement, which is the police should be the community and the communities should be the police. So one of the programs I implemented where the officers were going into the schools, walking through the schools, talking to the children, and reading books, actually gave them stars for doing that, and after a certain number of stars, they were allowed to, if they continued, they would pick a training class or get a day, a half-day off or a day off once they committed, did so many community programs. Also, some of the things I did as I assigned them to, to actually subdivisions and things like that, so the officers would go to the HOA meetings and things of those sorts and be in, straight in contact with the people, and they had the numbers. Of course, they were, you know, the HOAs were advised, don't call in case of emergencies, you know, use nine-one-one for that, but they, they were also contacting those officers and able to ask them direct questions at times.
Within the field of law enforcement, retention is a major challenge. What specific retention strategies will you engage to motivate your officers to stay?
Well, retention strategies also often involve the officers themselves. You got to, you have to understand why they are leaving. Those would come in actually speaking with the officers, maybe doing surveys, finding out why they're leaving. It's not always money. A lot of times, it's, it's how they're treated, it's how they're treated by the command and on down. What kind of a, of climate do you have at those, at those lower levels, and, and do they know that you actually care that they're still there? If all's the same, and a guy's making forty thousand dollars more a year, then you may have to address that issue. But a lot of times, you can, you can address those issues by surveying your people, finding out what their problem is, why they're leaving, and hopefully retain those individuals by making some personal changes yourself and within your command staff.
Finish the sentence, the role of a police chief is?
To be part of the community, to be the community and listen to the community and listen to, to their officers and their command staff. You're there as their liaison and the, and the community's liaison, and try to work between the two to make, to make them one.
That's it, Chairman.
Okay. Appreciate your interest and being here with us this evening. You are most welcome to stay with us throughout the rest of the interviews. I believe we have one more, and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
May I approach?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The last candidate is Kevin Roberts.
Good evening.
Ms. Ambles.
Yes, sir. Serving and protecting the community is one of the main essential functions of policing. Please describe an innovative, community-based program you would like to implement. Discuss the program's significance to the community.
In the past, we've just gone to calls and just responded to the requests of citizens, and we've approached crime from a statistical point of view, doing analysis weekly. We need to combine those efforts and use those statistics to identify target areas, but in addition to targeted policing, we need to think about incorporating partners in the county to provide assistance to those in need beyond just making arrests. How do we do that? We do need a, a heavy enforcement piece in place, but we also need to provide alternatives to citizens. We have young men and women in this county who may be involved in criminal activity because they lack direction or lack the opportunity to do anything else. So although crime reduction is the primary responsibility of the police department, we're about improving the quality of life of the county. That includes helping those who may need diversion in other areas. So, we identify the high crime areas, we enforce those laws strongly in those areas, and those individuals that need other types of assistance, we need to partner with our juvenile courts, victims assistance, youth services, I believe I got the title right, we've been interacting already to provide other options besides just enforcement. It's a combined effort, and it's going to take that type of thinking to move forward and reduce crime and increase quality of life, which is one of the pillars of the county.
Within the field of law enforcement, retention is a major challenge. What specific retention strategies will you engage to motivate your officers to stay?
We're dealing with that challenge as we speak. One of the greatest problems across the nation right now is retention and recruitment of good police officers, and that's what we need at Clayton County Police Department, exceptional police officers. Of course, the first thing you want to talk about when it comes to retention is pay. Pay is not the end-all, be-all. Pay is just a carrot to get a good employee to look into our agency, but there are other things that we need to do as an agency to keep those good employees. One being, we have millennials in the workforce right now. They don't respond the same way as my group did coming up, and they need more explanation and things of that nature. So we have to change the way we supervise and manage our employees and be more open to discussion. and be more open to discussion and communication. We need to find out what motivates those individuals in that millennial group, tap into their abilities. For example, we have employees right now at the police department that run circles around Deputy Chief Roberts when it comes to managing a computer. And I'm not offended by that. I appreciate their abilities. We need to enhance those abilities, take advantage of them, and promote them. Employees want to feel valued at the agency. That means we need to recognize them more often. And I appreciate the employees that we have at the agency right now, and I would do my best going forward if I'm chosen as the department head to make sure that recognition is regular and is genuine. Uh, employees wanna know where they're going from day one when they come to the agency. How do we achieve that? We need a co, uh, clear career path for employees when they hit the door. And what I mean by that is, when I came to the police department as a patrolman, all I wanted to be was a detective. Uh, it wasn't clear to me how to get there. These millennials wanna know, how do they get to their goal? How do I become a detective? How do I get on a SWAT team? How do I become the chief of police? We don't know. But we'll paint the picture for you, put the bricks in place for you to walk that walk to get to where you wanna go. How are we doing that? We've already reached out to Human Resources and put a career path plan in place. Actually, I think I hit send on an email just yesterday to the Human Resources Director, painting that career path plan. And hopefully, upon her review, it becomes something that we could put on our internet for access for all employees, so that they don't have to guess. And they don't have to hope that a supervisor's gonna tell them the right way to get to their career goal objective. So, we provide open communication from supervision. We provide the opportunity for advancement and a clear path on how to get there. And I think that will develop loyalty from the employees, and we'll get more twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year police officers at the Clayton County Police Department.
Finish the sentence. The role of a police chief is...
To manage the lives of the citizens and employees of the Clayton County, and keeping everyone safe and improving the quality of life.
That's it, Chairman.
Okay. Deputy Chief, we appreciate your interest in this position. We will, you're welcome to stay. Uh, we are finished with the interview, so we are going to, unless there's any other business before us, recess to executive session, where we will discuss what the next step will be. Uh, well, yeah, on that too. Uh, with that being said, can I get a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation?
So moved, Chair.
I'll second the motion. Those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Those who are leaving, those who are staying, you're definitely welcome to stay. A motion to re-.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
I have two settlement agreements, uh, here, um, both relating to the same incident. Uh, one is, uh, a request for a subtle, a case involving, uh, Dontrell Johnson. Uh, we had an accident occurred on August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, on Old Dixie Road and Morrow Road Incorporated, Morrow, Clayton County, Georgia, in the amount of twenty thousand. I'm sorry. Uh, no, an amount of twenty thousand dollars. The second relates to an accident involving Destiny Benton that occurred on the same day, August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, on Old Dixie Road, Morrow Ro, uh, Morrow Road Incorporated, Morrow, Clayton County, Georgia, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Any questions? Here and now, those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
And then, is there a motion to be made?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for this board not to waive client attorney privilege for Attorney Pam Everett, who is representing, uh, Clayton County in a case versus Gregory Porter. Is there a second?
A second.
Those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. All right. In reference to the chief of police job, is there a recommendation by this board?
I make a recommendation that we, um, hire or put in position Mr. Kevin Roberts.
There is a second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Chief Roberts. Chief Roberts, if you would, please come to the podium. On behalf of this board, we congratulate you, and we look forward to big things and great things happening here in Clayton County. I'd like to give you opportunities, if you were, if you like.
Just a few, Chairman. I'm not long.
Please, it's, I was late, and I was told it's snowing.
It's only nine. It's only nine-twenty-four. But taking those things into consideration, it's a great honor and a privilege to serve the men and women of the Clayton County Police Department and the citizens of Clayton County. And I would make my best effort to, uh, enhance the police department and make sure we, we take care of the needs of citizens, employees, and we will have a prosperous year going forward and a prosperous future.
Now, now, what do you wanna tell the board?
Tell us.
You told them.
I wanna take care of them, because without the Board of Commissioners, we will not be a successful agency or a successful county. And just the fact that you've taken the opportunity to appoint me as your chief, I appreciate your support and know this, that I'm about partnerships and communication with the board, the citizens, and the officers of the county. And the board's best interests should parallel the county's best interests should parallel the police department's best interests. And that's my mission. That's my, my contract with you.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations. You ain't got three minutes.
Anybody say mission?
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Those of favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.